Okay, it's 8:31 and so I'm going to call the council meeting of Tuesday, February 11th, to order. We have an agenda that's in front of us. Are there any additions to that agenda? Counselor Cunningham?
I will add Division 5 to council and committee reports, please.
So...
I can give you...
9.1?
Yeah, and it's the event we attended. Some of us attended in Drumheller, RMA Spring Meeting, and the Women in Business Awards for March 7th. Please.
Okay, so Division 5, RMA, Central Zone, Women in Business, and there was one other, I'm sorry.
The Drumheller event last week, Unbounded Thinking?
That was an economic thing or something?
Correct.
Drumheller.
Danny Page with Travel Alberta.
Okay, so 9.1, Division 5, 9.2, RMA Central, 9.3, Women in Business, 9.4, Drumheller Travel. Anything else? Counselor Christie?
Quick blurb on Community Futures and the Brownlee Log Seminar last week.
Okay, Community Futures, 9.5. Okay, Community Futures, nine point five, and nine point six, Brownlee Law. Any other additions? Counsel, Deputy Reeve McGee?
I will report on the Agri- Aggregates Business Panel by the NDP.
Oh, okay, nine point seven, Agribusiness Panel you went to on my behalf, thank you. Any other additions? Counselor Christie?
If not, I'll move the agenda as amended.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, the council meeting minutes from January twenty-eighth were pre-circulated. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Counselor Penner?
I make the motion that council approves the adoption of the minutes of the January twenty-eight, twenty-two-five regular council meeting as presented.
Okay, thank you for that. We have a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from the January twenty-eighth meeting as presented. All those in favor? And that is carried also unanimously. Thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda is four point one, Bylaw nineteen-eleven, Community Aggregate Payment Levy, First Reading. So, welcome. Oh, we haven't seen you for a while, Ms. Khalid, and, oh, we haven't seen you for a while either, Mr. Zier. So, welcome, both of you, and anytime you're ready.
Good morning, council. Today, administration brings forward first reading of Bylaw nineteen-eleven, the Community Aggregate Payment Levy. On November nineteen, twenty-twenty-four, during the Committee of the Whole Meeting, council was introduced to the Provincial Community Aggregate Levy Regulation, as well as the draft cap levy bylaw brought forward by administration. Currently, Neheal County does not have a cap levy bylaw in place. Since the regulation's introduction in two thousand and six, two-thirds of rural municipalities, including all those bordering the county, have implemented a cap levy. In line with council's objectives to explore new funding and revenue opportunities, this bylaw is being proposed as a potential revenue source. The Sand and Gravel Association strongly support this levy, recognizing it as an effective tool to promote the industry while also generating revenue to support municipal initiatives such as road maintenance. The cap levy applies exclusively to private pit operators of sand gravel and pit-run gravel within Neheal County boundaries. Currently, there are five pits, three gravel, and two sand pits that would be subject to this levy. Exemptions defined by the regulation include pit-owned or leased by the crown or the municipality. Entities that operate in multiple municipalities would be subject to the levy or not based on the location of the pit, and Neheal County would not receive a levy from pits located in other municipality. Administration anticipates generating between five thousand and ten thousand annually from the levy, though this estimate is based on limited data regarding private gravel and sand processing within the county. In the initial years, all levy payments are proposed to be directed to the gravel reserve. This strategy allows administration to assess revenue levels and develop an effective utilization plan. While revenue from the levy may fluctuate, it is intended to serve as supplemental funding for reserves or project support, not as the primary funding source. The administration cost of this program will be minimal, as existing staff work plans will be utilized. To ensure efficiency, operators will report their aggregate hauling via the honor system. The administrative tasks are divided into one-time and quarterly responsibilities. One-time tasks, such as setting up the laser fiche form and assisting operators with setup, will require about ten hours, and the form will require operators to declare the amount of aggregate hauled from their pits, excluding those aggregates that are exempt from the levy. Quarterly tasks will include two to four hours of administrative time, and with only five eligible pits, administration anticipates these tasks will not place a significant strain on resources. As mentioned before, municipalities bordering Neheal County have already implemented similar levies, and as a result, sand gravel and pit-run gravel operators are likely already familiar with this levy structure, which should aid in the implementation of the program. Administration recommends scheduling the full implementation of the levy for twenty-twenty-six to allow private aggregate operators sufficient time to incorporate reporting structures and clearly understanding the requirements. It is proposed that a detailed timeline will be developed highlighting key milestones such as system testing and integration phases. Additionally, a support framework will be established with contact information provided to operators for assistance throughout the process. Given the small number of operators, a brief pilot phase can be implemented to address any technical or operational challenges before the full rollout of this bylaw in twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, I guess the discussion, questions, clarification?
So, just a question through the reef to Mr. Hogan. My understanding is we have three operators, or a small number, as it was mentioned, that would be subject to this levy. So, I'm just wondering, did administration contact the three operators, and if you did, what was the feedback that was gained from these communications?
Mr. Hogan, go ahead.
Through the chair to Counselor Cunningham. No, we did not directly contact the providers. We do have a small number that exists today. What exists in the future if more pits are opened up is unknown.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or comment? Counselor Cunningham, yes, please.
Okay, so I think it was at the Cow meeting, there was a benchmarking done with other municipalities. So, I know last time there was talk about a couple thousand, and now we're looking at maybe five to ten. When I look at the benchmarking for the other municipalities, like, we have some like Lakom that are pretty close to nine hundred thousand, Rocky View, eight hundred, I mean, some very large amounts. So, I'm just wondering, do we know the amount of operators, like, kind of estimate, like, that are affected by those other municipalities? Those are very large numbers, so they obviously would have more than three. So, do we know an estimate of how many for those municipalities?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the reef, we wouldn't have a total on the number of operators in the other municipalities, nor on the exact size of their pits or any of those details.
Counselor Phobes, please.
I guess one of the questions that I would have is, is if the operators chose not to file, how are we tasking our employees with collecting those funds?
Again, Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, in the bylaw, there is a fine structure that's outlined, so if we didn't receive that porting back, then there would be enforcement action that the bylaw allows us to take.
Counselor Cunningham?
So, just to follow up to that, I was asked by one of the operators if they choose not to report and pay the fine, is that an opportunity that's available to them?
That is a choice that an individual could choose to make.
Are there any other questions, discussion? Counselor Phobes, please.
So, the RFD reads that the Sand and Gravel Association supports this type of levy being altered. When I investigated through the site, it did say that that should be used for community, such as parks, recreation, those type of things. I see ours is just going into a reserve. Is this the intention of the money being collected?
Mr. Hogan again, I guess, please?
Through the reef, there'd be an option there. This would be put into, could be put into reserve for future use of community projects. We have a number of different reserves that would fit that bill, so whether that's street to the gravel, or parks and rec reserve. Likewise, as Ms. Khalid mentioned in her presentation, this could also be used to assist with funding for other projects that are currently ongoing within each year's operating budget. So, maybe I'll rephrase that statement. I shouldn't say they're ongoing. That implies today, but future projects that are approved in the operating budget could have this funding be designated towards them as well. Those would be decisions that council could make in the moment, or in the budget discussion each year.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Phobes, please.
How many documented complaints have we received from the public that live near these gravel pits that are saying that the roads are completely destroyed, that we would require this levy to fix the roads?
Mr. Hogan, please.
Through the chair, we would have to, we would have to go back and look at our complaints to see what we'd received around gravel operations and gravel hauls. Throughout the years, there have been some that are, that have come in, going years back. I don't know if we have the means to pull those out of tracking, but that's a number we don't have at our fingertips.
Counselor Phobes, please.
So, of the three gravel and two sand, I believe, how many are near the provincial highways, federal highways, and our highways?
Thank you. Through the chair, just to clarify, are you looking for direct access to the highway program?
Correct, because if we're gonna put this levy in that it states it's for road repairs and stuff, some of the roads that we maintain are not our roads. They're the provinces or the federal governments. So, we only have certain roads. I'm just wondering, so I believe one of the sand pits is near Highway twenty-one, or twenty-seven, so it's, that's provincial highway, am I not correct?
Correct. So, through the chair, I'm just looking at the intent of the cap levy here, and just looking at proximity to provincial versus municipal highways. We can't regulate where that gravel goes once it leaves that pit. So, if it enters a provincial highway directly, nothing says that it can't enter a county right of way or allowance shortly after that to deliver it somewhere else. So, the intent of this program is to catch it at the point of source. After that, we have little control over where it can go after that.
So, then I guess that's why I'm asking where the gravel and sand is within the county, because if they're near highways that we're not in, that we have to maintain from the public purse, then really, how much of that road are we, is going to affect us that this levy would be covering the cost of?
Counselor Christie, you had a comment?
Just a comment on the sand pit that you're talking about. I buy gravel from Sundry Sand and Gravel, and they deliver it to my yard when they're going to the sand pit, and I pay a cap levy on that gravel. So, that traffic is not just out of that pit.
As rural residents, and quite often we're our worst enemies for not complaining to do with our neighbor down the road and whatnot else, we just don't do it. We feel we're, to be good neighbors, we get along, and we maybe have a little discussion with them at times about what they're doing to the road, and, you know. So, I'm not sure how much detail you'll be able to bring back to us on how many complaints were made over the years, but, because there's so much didn't get done. We actually talked to our counselor about that kind of stuff, and whether they brought it forward or how they dealt with it, you know. It didn't necessarily always come to a complaint form. And I know things are done differently now than they were years ago with the documentation, but still, even with the documentation today, a lot of good neighbors don't complain this way.
So, I know we asked a question earlier on compliance, and what happens if there was no compliance. So, I was looking at the material that was presented to us in our November meeting around, in our original conversation around collection of the municipalities around us, and so we listed municipalities from Starland to Lakom, revenues being as little as no money to as much as over eight hundred thousand dollars. Of course, we're not anticipating that kind of revenue here, but I wonder if we had any indication from our neighbors around compliance. So, like, the least amount I see being collected was eleven hundred and change, and so are they having a problem with reporting and compliance from the gravel pits that are within their municipalities? So, that would be a question that I would have. So, Mr. Zier?
Yeah, thank you. Just through the chair, I can speak from personal experience, actually, on that, in a former municipality I worked for that had a cap levy in place, and the participation was, was close to a hundred percent. The operators, the owners of these pits understood their obligations, their regulations, and it was an honor system process as well, mail out and checks come in. That was basically to the extent of it. So, it was fairly low administration on that, and I've never, in my past, had to implement a fine on any of them for non-reporting, so, just from my own personal. We haven't reached out to any of the other ones in this list here. It's definitely a possibility. The council really would like to see that information.
Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
The aggregates tonnage, dollars per tonnage that's been asked to be charged here, going to RMA now for a number of years, this aggregate discussion has come up, especially quite a few years ago, with, whether it was a resolution or whether it was just a discussion, mostly a discussion, and a lot of it was to do with reclamation to of those sites. But a lot of my fellow counselors from some of the other municipalities couldn't believe that we didn't have a fee already, because we were one of few that don't have a fee in Alberta for aggregate.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comment or discussion? Counselor Cunningham?
So, after the reef made the motion to move ahead with us at the Cow meeting, Counselor Woodstock mentioned, would there be opportunity for discussion about the price that we're wanting to do pretend? So, I'm just wondering if council's wanting to have that conversation, because there, like, it is, there is variance in the other communities, and I think that's something we'd have to determine before we go forward.
I think at this point, because we have not done anything past first reading or passed any part of the bylaw, there's room for discussion on anything that's within the bylaws. So, yeah, I don't think, there's no decision made here, so there's no reason why we couldn't have conversation around, in the bylaws suggesting forty cents a ton. So, that's up to us, that's a council decision. So, Counselor Phobes, please.
So, then how did administration come up with the forty cents per ton?
Okay, so, Ms. Khalid?
Administration based that off of the other municipalities around the area that were also charging forty cents, but again, that is up to council if they would choose to change that.
Thank you. Mr. Zier?
Thank you, and just to add to Ms. Khalid's comments there, just so council aware, this regulation I mentioned in the past has come into effect two thousand and six. It started out at twenty-five cents per ton, and it was like that for the twelve years. In two thousand and eighteen, the province actually updated the regulation to allow up to forty cents to be allocated or to be feed out to the applicants there. So, it wasn't necessarily our number that was the maximum that we're permitted to charge back on these operators.
So, it's within the provincial regulation, that number's there, and in comparison to what our neighboring municipalities are doing, that seems to be a reasonable number? Okay. Counselor Cunningham, please.
Just looking at the benchmarking chart, I'm seeing Starland, which would be neighboring municipalities, at twenty-five, and Wheatlands at thirty, so I guess I would just question why we would go to the maximum right off the hop.
Counselor Phobes, please.
So, if the provincial regulation is up to forty, what's the low end of that as well? So, there is a range. Are you saying from the twenty-five cents up Are you saying from the 25 cents up to 40?
There's zero, like I guess they're looking for the range of what the cap levy is.
And through the chair, as far as I'm aware, there is no minimum. It is, it's the maximum that we're permitted to under legislation. There is no minimum that the province has stated.
Okay, thank you.
So just, just going back to the, the intent of the, the cap levy, and I guess to, to look at why it's before you to begin with here, this is an opportunity that, that administration has seen through mandate from council to look for different funding sources for this, for this county. This is a provincially mandated or provincially regulated opportunity that we saw and, and wanted to bring forward for, and it's, it's like mentioned, two-thirds of the municipalities in the province do subscribe to this, this levy. So yes, you're right, there is no maximum or minimum that we could there. The intent is that the, the costs of operating these systems, there's an understanding, as you mentioned with Alberta Sand and Gravel Association's support of this, that there is an impact to municipal infrastructure when, when the gravel pits are in an area. If it's segregated to that smaller area and that goes provincial or highways, or if it's a larger scale, there is an impact, and they understand that. Part of the support that you see from the Alberta Sand and Gravel is that they understand there's an impact, and this is a bit of a, I say an olive branch out that they're showing the community that they are paying back some of their, on top of the taxes and, and fees that they have. They are paying back to some of that repair of the municipal infrastructure. That's why, in speaking with my counterparts, that's why that Sand and Gravel Association and the owners that, that are involved in that do have such a high regard for this, because it does promote, and lots of them will actually put that on their, their signage that they pay so much towards the community to, to help support. So it's a bit of a goodwill as well on their end.
Counselor Christie.
I just want to point out, it's not the gravel pit paying that levy, it's the end user, because that'll be added to the cost of the gravel at the end of the day, because both when I'm hauling gravel from either sundry or, or Red Deer County, it passes through to that community, and I pay the levy.
Counselor Penner, please.
Exactly the same out of Rocky View and Wheatland and Starland. I know they're different amounts, but mostly comes out of Rocky View.
Okay, any other further, Counselor Phobes, please.
So then is the reasoning behind the 40 cents per ton as a way to generate, we're gonna do the maximum because that's the revenue we need to bring in to make the county run?
Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Through the chair, no Counselor Phobes, it's not accurate. Nobody is putting this program forward as something that's required to make the county run. It's simply an exploration of a revenue source that we're bringing forward for council's consideration.
Counselor Phobes, please.
So then one of the conversations that I had with a rate payer was around, we gave direction to administration to go out and find revenue sources for the, for the county, and the question came back to me is, is what were the other revenue sources? And I said, well, this is the only one that's come forward in a bylaw towards council. So is there other revenue sources that you will be considering to bring forward in the future? And the other thing that they, they said to me, and they are an egg producer, is, is when one day, well, let it happen, that my truck of grain's gonna have to have to pay that fee, even though I still pay taxes. These companies pay taxes as well, so those taxes are supposed to be used for the roads, and now we're gonna move forward with another tax on them so that they're gonna have to forward that tax on to our ratepayers or other ratepayers. So just curious to what other things we have as administration has found to bring in revenue for the county.
Go ahead, Mr. Hogan, please.
So through the chair, as administration identifies those sources, they're brought up to council. So there's no one cumulative list that is put forward in front of council. Essentially, as they're identified, they're brought forward. In the past, there's been other programs brought forward, like paid parking at Horseshoe Canyon. That was another revenue source that was not previously used up until a couple of years ago. This one was identified as something that the county hadn't discussed in a while and could be brought forward. As we've talked about in the presentation, it is a standard, it is fairly standard in municipalities in the province. Neahill County hadn't had this conversation in quite some time, and so it was brought forward on to that regard. As we looked at some of the other things that are out there in terms of revenue sources, they'll be brought back as they're identified.
Okay, thank you for that. Sorry. There was a second, there was a second part of that question regarding agriculture.
The agriculture is probably our heaviest subsidized tax group in the county. As we look at the impacts, council has made decisions to continue those subsidies or those exemptions, whatever, depending on the issue, whatever, where do you want to apply to them? As an example, when we are looking at road bans, when we're looking at things like that, agriculture has generally been exempt from those. So council by direct intentional decision has allowed agriculture to operate on our roads in a way that other users are not necessarily allowed to operate on. That's a decision that council has made on behalf of, on behalf of the county. If that decision was to change, that again would be a council decision.
Counselor Phobes, did you have a follow-up? Sorry.
I did, then I would make the suggestion that the levy of the cap go to 30 cents, not 40. I don't want to do the maximum. Let's ease people into it, because it's going back to the people that are purchasing, so let's not give them undue burden that we've discussed about what we do when we do water and sewer and when we do any kind of increase to the hamlets. So let's make it not go to the max right off the bat. If it used to be 25 and this is the first time we're implementing it, let's go to at least 30. Let's not just go to the full M because the province says we should.
Just a clarification, I think the province caps the maximum at 40, but it's not necessarily suggested that we go there. Is that correct? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
Through, Mr. Reeve, the, the regulation allows a municipality to charge up to 40 cents, but there's no, it's up to the municipality and through that, the council of the day to determine where that rate is at.
So we could set a lower rate based on council direction. So we have a suggestion from Counselor Phobes that we consider that starting at a lower rate than the 40 cents, which would be 30. Any other discussion, comment? Deputy Reeve McGee.
I would support making that amendment to the bylaw to 30 instead of 40. Just, I appreciate the ease in peace.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion, question, or comment? So I have a suggestion for amendment to the 30 cents rather than 40. Are there any other comments, questions? Counselor Christie, please.
If we need a motion for that, I'd make that motion.
Mr. Hogan, do we need a motion to amend that within the bylaw, or can we just make the amendment and then when we make a motion for a first reading, we would say as amended?
So through, Mr. Chair, you could do, you could do either. It is a proposed bylaw that you've not given any readings to yet. If all of council agreed with the 30 cents, essentially you have unanimous consent, and then we would go the, the latter option that you outlined, which was giving first reading as amended.
Okay. All right. So I guess I would be looking for direction from council. Do you want a motion to the effect that we adjust the bylaw to that 30 cents, or can we just agree that we would go to the 30 cents? What's the wish of council? Counselor Penner?
I'm fine with 30 cents.
Okay, so Counselor Cunningham?
Sorry, and I have to be the odd one out, but I am not in favor of this bylaw for three producers that we haven't contacted. We haven't had conversations with them. Openness is one of the pillars of our strategic plan, so I guess I have issues with that. A tax is a tax is a tax, and I understand that two-thirds of municipalities do it, but my mom always told me, if your friend jumps off the water tower, you're gonna do it too. I think for me, I'm looking at it solely not what other municipalities are doing, I'm looking, is it best for Neahill County? And talking to some people in the industry, I just don't feel at this time that it makes sense for here, for the money that's gonna be collected and the expense that it's gonna cost.
Okay, so my sense is that if we're going to even have a conversation around changing the levy from the 40 that's in the bylaw to 30, that I would need your motion then, Counselor Christie.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion from Counselor Christie to amend the suggested rate to 30 cents within the proposed bylaw. We will vote on that motion once we have it. So that would be in Part 3, Item 11, the uniform levy rate for all shipments of aggregate from a pit within the county should, shall be 30 cents. amend the proposed bylaw so that the cap levy rate in the bylaw is 30 cents per ton Council amend the proposed bylaw 1911 so that the cap levy will read, cap levy rate possibly in there, please, Carolyn, Ms. Vanderkoen, sorry. Will read 30 cents per ton of aggregate. Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Christie, is that reflect?
Looks good to me.
Okay. Mr. Hogan, please.
Through, Mr. Reeve, just so that the, the group is, is clear. So this motion is to amend the proposed bylaw. If it passes, then the proposed bylaw would go forward with a 30 cent levy instead of 40. And when I say go forward, that would be for first, for council's consideration, a first reading if somebody made that motion. If this doesn't pass, then the amended, the bylaw as proposed would remain, and assuming somebody made the motion, it would go forward for consideration at 40 cents. So if this is passed and it does receive three readings, it would go into effect at 30 cents. If this is not passed and the bylaw as proposed receives all three readings, now or at a future council meeting, it would go into effect at 40 cents.
Okay, no, I appreciate the clarification. So at this point in time, we're not voting on the actual aggregate payment levy bylaw. All we're doing is voting on an amendment to that bylaw. And then the whole bylaw would come back to be considered by council at the new rate of 30 cents. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Is there any further discussion needed to the motion that's in front of us that council amend the proposed bylaw 1911 so that the cap levy rate will read 30 cents per ton of aggregate? Any further discussion to the motion that's in front of us at this point? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Are we ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. So the bylaw now has been amended and only in terms of the cap rate of, is now 30 cents rather than 40 cents. Any further discussion regarding the bylaw? Counselor Woodstock.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Question would be for operations, clamshell trailers that haul aggregate 30 ton, is what they haul?
Mr. Zier.
Thank you. Through the chair, yes, approximately.
Okay, so 30 times the 30 cents, nine bucks, which is paid for by the end producer, or the buyer, end user.
Through the chair, it would be up to the, the operator where they would delegate that, that cost to.
Yeah, okay. All right, I just wanted to see how, how much of an effect that would have, so thank you for the information.
Counselor Christie.
Which is less than 3% of that load, probably.
Any further question, comment, or discussion related to the bylaw as it's being proposed at this time? Deputy Reeve McGee.
Sorry, I think I jumped the gun. I'm assuming there's no other discussion, I would like to make the motion to approve the first reading bylaw 1911, community aggregate payment levy.
Now, because we've amended it with that other motion, we don't have to say that it's as amended, correct?
That's correct. The, the bylaw now being considered by council has a rate of 30 cents instead of 40.
Okay. All right, so now we have a motion in front of us to approve first reading of bylaw 1911, that being a bylaw to authorize the implementation of a community aggregate payment levy. Is there any discussion to the motion from Deputy Reeve McGee that we approve first reading? Any further discussion? I'm not seeing any. Does that mean we're ready for the question? Okay, I'm gonna ask the question. The motion reads that council approve first reading of bylaw 1911, that being a bylaw to authorize the implementation of a community aggregate payment. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. So at this point, actually, and I don't know if it's appropriate for me to suggest this or not, I see that there's some questions that we really haven't had complete information to this morning. Questions around how much tonnage is being produced within our area, questions around location and amount of road use, questions around compliance and enforcement, and questions around, you know, how accurately the surrounding municipalities' cap rates have been reflected in the discussion today. So I'm wondering, and again, I'm, I'm looking for direction from you as council and from administration, I'm wondering if it would be appropriate for us to just hold second reading at this point, or is it appropriate, we do second reading and then wait to get that information and then proceed? So I'm looking for some direction from both council. Are you comfortable going ahead with second reading at this point, or would you like to have additional information? And if so, I, I guess I'm looking for that direction. Counselor Christie.
I guess my comment is, and one of the things that I see coming from a cap levy is it would give us an, an actual number of the volume that's being produced, because right now we're guessing, and just don't know.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Penner?
I guess legally, or do they have to give us that number? How will we know that number? Like, it's a private business, so we, they don't have to give us those, those numbers. We can find the numbers out from the neighbors. In my opinion, I think on November 19th, unfortunately, I couldn't be here in person, but I did listen in on the, on the whole, the conversation around this, and I think you've had great discussion about this, and I'm actually prepared to go to second reading.
Okay, thank you for that. I mean, it's up to council to make that decision. I would be looking, if we're considering doing second reading, then I would be looking for a motion, and if that's not forthcoming, then we are not going forward, so. Counselor Penner?
I would make the motion that we approve second reading of bylaw 1911, that being the bylaw to authorize the implementation of a community aggregate payment levy.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, thank you for that. All right. Any discussion to the motion for second reading? Not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, at this point, we're either going to have a motion to approve, um, third reading, um, motion to go to third reading, or we're leaving it. So what's council's direction? What's the wish of council? Councilor Phobes, please.
Well, I would like to see the information being provided to me before I can move forward with a hundred percent of a, of a vote. I'm, I'm not in favor of this bylaw just because I don't believe it's the right revenue source coming in for the amount that we have, and I, and I'm sitting in this place too with this bylaw that if somebody had gravel on their land that they thought that they were going to do, would they, would they open it up because of the amount of work we're about to place on them with the paper?
Okay, thank you for that. Councilor Penner?
I guess, can you clarify the information that you would like brought back to us? Because I, do you have a problem? Oh, sorry. Um, with, I, I, you, the businesses within our county, I don't think they necessarily have to give us those numbers. So, so that's, to me, it's just something that's implemented, and if you're going forward, um, opening up a pit of some kind, you know, this is Neheal County, this is a fee you have to pay, um, and this fee is passed on to the end producer. So that's where I have, I, I'm trying to wrap my head around, um, what else we, information you need, is it from the other municipalities and all?
Well, I believe that the Reeve listed the things, and those are the things I would be willing to find the information out on.
I guess my sense of the conversation is there's some information that as council, we're feeling that perhaps we needed, and, um, I'm also sensing there's a discomfort with going ahead with third reading. So we either are going to, um, make the motion for unanimous consent of third reading and defeat that, or we're not going to bother doing that, we're just going to delay third reading to a future council meeting where that information could be brought back. Mr. Hogan, direction, please.
Through you, Mr. Reeve, actually, you've, I think you've outlined the two, the two options is, um, council's either going to put forward a motion to unanimous consent, and if that's not unanimous, then this would be brought back at the next meeting, or you just make the decision to go to the next item and this is brought forward at the next meeting. Regarding the, the, the information, um, things like tonnage and road use within the county, we're probably not going to be able to get, and so if you're looking for that information, it's probably not going to be forthcoming. The road use one would be particularly difficult as well, because that's all going to be dependent on where those loads are going, which will change all the time. The, in terms of the, the reporting accuracy or the perceived compliance that the other municipal neighbors are getting, that information, I believe, we could obtain.
Okay, so again, I'm looking for direction from council. I'm either going to get a motion that we grant unanimous consent, or I'm going to get consensus from council that we're just going to leave it and ask for some additional information. So, uh, again, I, I need your direction, that's, I can't make this decision. You as council need to provide me that direction, so. Councilor Phobes, please.
Let's move it ahead, then. I'll make the motion that council grant unanimous consent to proceed with third reading of bylaw nineteen eleven.
Okay, thank you for that. So we do have a motion that council grant unanimous consent to proceed with third reading of bylaw nineteen eleven. Is there any discussion to that motion? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is defeated. So again, um, at this point, I guess I'm going to look for, um, so perhaps at the next meeting, what we should bring back is location of where these pits are. That'll help us in terms of what roads might get some usage and where they are and who's, actually, maybe, and you're right, I mean, they can be exactly against Highway X, Y, Z, and instead of going on to that highway and going north, south, east, west, they could take one of our roads and go in the opposite direction completely. So we don't know where they're traveling, but perhaps having the locations might help. And then just, and in, um, I sensed there was an interest in knowing, and Mr. Zir, I appreciate your experience from previous, um, location, where you were around compliance, but if we could maybe do a little bit of research on the compliance side and whether the information from the twenty twenty-two in the cow meeting, if that cap levy rates are still reflected by our neighboring municipalities? And then I also heard, uh, and I don't know whether, um, there was some question around, have we had conversation with our producers? I think we know exactly who those are, so, um, if that's a wish of council, we could ask for just some conversation with, I think there are maybe two or three producers here in the county. I bet I can tell you what they're going to say around the idea of a cap levy rate without even talking to them, and I have talked to at least one of them, so I know. So those are, the two things I think would be the locations and the compliance and the levy rate current. Sorry. Those are, that's three things, I guess. My math is bad. Is there anything else that we would be looking for as council, coming back to the next? Councilor Cunningham, please.
I don't know if it's so much about coming back, but I know there's been a couple of comments about, you know, um, maybe I buy gravel from other municipalities and this is what it's costing me additionally. I have talked to one of our producers, and I don't think we as Neheal County can determine what that price is going to be for, for anyone. Like, I've heard maybe it would be an extra twenty-five to thirty dollars a load, but in saying that, one of the producers I talked to said they do not have the administration, um, perhaps, that maybe Neheal County does, so maybe they're going to have to charge more because of the paperwork that they're going to have to do. So I just don't want it to come out and say, if we put this levy forward, um, uh, my rate pair down the road, this is, it's only going to cost you X, Y, Z, and, and I think Mr., Councilor Whitstock kind of mentioned that, they could either absorb that cost themselves as a business owner, or they could pass it on, and we can't, we can't make that assumption what a private business owner is going to do. But in saying that it might just cost them an extra nine dol- whatever, we don't know that, because we can't make that decision for, for business owners, right? So I just don't want, you know, it to come out that, don't worry about this, because it's only going to cost you X, Y, Z. We, we can't determine what that'll be.
So we, we do know in the bylaw that the cost would be thirty cents currently per ton of aggregate. And how they pass that along or what they do with that, you are correct, Councilor Cunningham. We have no way of either directing or managing that, that's their own personal business decisions, so. At this point, what we're asking for is those three things that have been mentioned, and unless I'm hearing anything different, I'm assuming we're prepared to move on to the next item. And my thanks to you, Ms. Kalahit, and Mr. Zir for being here this morning and presenting, very much appreciated. And we are going to take a break. Uh, we are going to be in recess till nine thirty, so, um, we are in recess until nine thirty.
Well, look at this last night, real quick. Cliff is in Palm Springs, this went through the sky last night.
Oh, wow.
He goes, what do you think this is? I'm like, I don't want to know, but it looks like a whale sperm. It is, but...
Okay, it is nine thirty, and I am going to call the meeting back to order. It is nine thirty. So in our agenda, we are going to be at, I'm lost in my own agenda here, five point one point one. Um, unnamed, naming unnamed roads in the Kirkpatrick area. And, uh, welcome, Mr. McNair. Been a while since we've seen you, but welcome back and, uh, anytime you're ready.
Uh, good morning, Reeving Council. Um, I'm here today to present a request for decision to rename two roads in the Kirkpatrick area. So in Kirkpatrick, residents accessing off of two currently unnamed roads are addressed as Highway five seventy-five, leading to significant confusion for emergency services and delivery operations. This confusion compromises the efficiency of service delivery and potential delays, potentially delays emergency response, posing a risk to residents' safety. To resolve this issue and enhance the accuracy of location data, it is proposed to officially name these roads, rename these roads. The naming process adheres to the Neheal County's Naming of County Roads Policy five-dash-nineteen, which requires that any new road names be approved by council. As per policy guidelines, council's approval is essential to ensure that the names are appropriate, do not duplicate existing names, and meet community standards. In alignment with this policy, letters were sent out to residents of Kirkpatrick to involve them directly in the naming process. These letters requested suggested, these letters requested suggestions for the road names, emphasizing the importance of their participation in enhancing logistical and safety, infrastructure of their community. The collection of suggestions from residents not only fosters community engagement, but also ensures that the new road names reflect local heritage and values. The following names and reasons have been submitted by residents through this process. Kirkpatrick, Neheal Creek, Sacred Valley- Kirkpatrick, Neale Creek, Sacred Valley, Red Deer River, and Deer Valley Road. Can you switch over to the map, or on my laptop? I've got a different one up here, on my laptop here. So these are the addresses and roads in question. So the changes to these addresses and road names are part of a broader ongoing project in which the GIS and planning departments are reviewing county addresses. These efforts aim to correct locations that have historically caused, or could potentially cause issues for emergency services when trying to locate properties. Currently, all 12 developed properties in Kirkpatrick are inaccurately addressed off of the highway instead of the adjacent roads. Furthermore, the existing road names, Service Road, is overly generic and commonly duplicated across the province. Hence, it should be renamed to something more distinctive. Similarly, Range Road 211 is disconnected from Township Grip, grid, and ends abruptly, making the reference to the grid potentially confusing. This road should also be renamed. Is there any questions based on this map before I move on to, uh, administration's proposal, recommendation?
I'm not seeing any at this point, so go ahead if you would, please.
Administration recommends renaming Service Road to Kirkpatrick Close, and Range Road 211 to either Deer Valley Lane or Sacred Valley Lane. These proposed names are unique within Neale County and neighboring municipalities and are the most distinctive from the list of suggestions, minimizing the likelihood of duplication elsewhere. The recommended road names accommodate one suggestion from each of the two road name applicants.
Uh, question, Counselor Penner. Sure, please.
Thanks for presenting this morning there. Um, is the deer, that spelling a deer, or the deer that, the wildlife deer? Just because of the, one of the suggestions was a deer run down the lane, however it was, so I just wanted clarification there, please. It was just a typo.
Uh, through the chair, those, we took the names exactly from the, from the applicants, but I think that can be amended.
Okay, 'cause I thought on the applicant it said it was the deer run down that road, something was their suggestion, and this is like the John deer, with the E on the end of it. Sorry, that's all, just minor.
Through the chair, that sounds like an error on my part, and we can make that correction.
Okay, um... Mr. McNair, did you have anything else for us, or is, it's up to us at this point?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So the suggestions from administration is that the Service Road would be changed to Kirkpatrick Close, and the Range Road 211 become either Deer Valley Lane or Sacred Valley Lane. Both using lane. Counselor Penner, yeah? Yeah, go ahead, please.
Um, I like all what I see in front of me. Um, but I do prefer the Deer Valley Lane over the Sacred Valley Lane because we're right at the river, and to me, it's, it's not its own little valley. Like, it's, it's an open area. Um, I know it says lane, but those are just, and this lane counts, and all those are my two preferences, Kirkpatrick Close and Deer Valley Lane.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, um, discussion? Oh, yeah, Counselor Penner, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's okay. Um, I did have an issue to start with Kirkpatrick Close, because Kirkpatrick technically is to the south, correct? And I, I wondered if there was going to be any roads or closes or cul-de-sac, whatever, come forward that we may want to use that name, um, down along that road. But the little bit of research I, I did, I couldn't see any roads that may be going to be renamed because the main road through Kirkpatrick is, uh, a Range or Township Road, I can't remember which one it was, through it. So I did have a bit of a, a problem to start with, just because of Kirkpatrick is a little bit south. But I'm happy with, in saying that, I am happy with these two.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion or comment? We have a suggestion. Yes, Counselor Cunningham, please.
Just a comment. I just want to say I really appreciate the fact that we put this out to the residents down there and let them have a say. So I really appreciate the engagement that was done with them, so thanks.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Phobes, please.
So I, honestly, the names are the names, but I do like the Sacred Valley just because of what, the, the reason that was given here in the RFD, just because it's, it, it's the entrance to the valley. So I did enjoy that. So it's a name. True story, at the end of the day, I'm not going to lose sleep over it. I'm, just want whatever the residents would like to see it happen so that they can have the emergency vehicles show up in a timely manner.
Okay, any other comments, discussion? Ultimately, I would be looking for a motion from council to approve the names. Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'd like to move that we rename Service Road to Kirkpatrick Close, and Range Road 211 to Deer, am I forgetting it? Deer Valley Road? Deer, Deer Valley Road?
Deer Valley Lane.
Lane, okay. Adhering to the Naming County Roads Policy Number 519, and authorizing the required public notice as well as the necessary updates to county maps and road signage.
Okay. So that means everyone will be getting a new blue sign?
Uh, through the chair, correct.
And that'll be on our dime, basically?
Yes, and the, the cost of materials will be about $780.
Okay.
Granted that this is part of a larger addressing project, and in the near future, I'll be coming back to Committee of the Whole um, to present the list of addresses that will be changing throughout the county. So this is part of a larger project.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Penner, yes, absolutely.
Um, this does not pertain to this, but I did notice on the weekend driving down to, to, south of Lethbridge, that underneath some of the blue signs, some of the landowners have taken it upon themselves, and it looks like it's been printed at the exact same company, on their little, underneath about this big, it actually just says their surname. Is that something that we made, and this is just putting it forward, I'm not, you don't have to answer me today. I thought if you, you, at some time when you're looking into it, um, if that's something that, uh, ratepayers might like, you don't have to do it, it's not compulsory, like, not everybody's done it, but I just thought I'd throw it, I just noticed it on the way down.
Could we make it an option available to them?
Uh, through the chair, um, currently in our, I believe it's our addressing bylaw, it states that ratepayers shouldn't be attaching any other type of signs to their post that has the blue sign on it, so I think we would have to update that bylaw.
Okay, thanks for that, Cody. Yeah, just, it just happened on the weekend, I saw it, so thank you. Maybe that's something we do in the future, if it's a cheap option that ratepayers would like to use.
Okay, any other discussion, comment, or questions? We do have a motion that council renames the Service Road to Kirkpatrick Close, and Range Road 211 to Deer Valley Lane, adhering to the Naming of County Roads Policy 5-19, and authorizing the required public notice as well as the necessary changes to county maps and road signage. Any further discussion to that motion? Not, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. So thank you, Cody, Mr. McNair. Appreciate you being here this morning and bringing this information for us, so thank you. The next item on our agenda is 5.4.1, International Women's Day. I was going to say, welcome, Ms. Kester, but, um, that won't work in this case, so welcome, Mr. Gannon. And anytime you're ready.
Thank you, council. Um, I'm really happy to be able to present this to council. Anytime there is a celebration for greatness in people in our community and, uh, um, on these events is, is, it's just such a pleasure to do and have the team research this. Uh, unfortunately, our team wasn't able to be here, so they send their regrets due to, uh, conflicting, uh, scheduling. Um, but I'm here for you, so, uh, so I'm glad to be here to present this to you. I hope I can do it in, uh, in as good of shape and form as what they would, uh, and I'll, I'll move on with the presentation. Um, January 21st, council asked administration if we can bring back, because they wanted a greater understanding to these different events and what was going on within the community, which is great to understand, you know, the celebrations and how they can, uh, be involved in them, and what does it pertain? As per the RFD, there are two events, and, and I want to make sure that council understands, they're, they're significantly different. Um, the, the first event, um, the Women in Business Luncheon, uh, is located at the Pomeroy Inn in Olds. Um, and that's, uh, to recognize, uh, greatness, uh, in, in women in different fields. Uh, and there's an awards portion to, to this event. So the, this is to celebrate those, uh, contributions of those amazing, inspiring women across Clearwater County, Mountain View County, Neale County, and municipalities within those regions. So, uh, the event itself is $50 per person, or a table can be reserved for $450, and, and it sits 10. Um, and we did put a link there, so individuals, uh, they should be able to access it that way. If they do have any problems, our team is, uh, is available to answer those questions or redirect them. Um, there are sponsorship availabilities, and we haven't been formally requested to, uh, see if we're willing to provide sponsorship, but we wanted to let you know that there, uh, it's available in increments of 250, 500, and 1,000. Uh, interested sponsors, please contact Deborah Rice, uh, Salomons, uh, for further information so they can arrange that should they wish. Uh, we also attached a link for more information on the event, so they can really have a wholesome understanding of, of the event and the day. It, it looks like a great planned event, uh-huh, as it was last year. There's also a nominations portion to this. As I mentioned, there was awards. And the nominations are for women in agriculture, women in energy, women in hospitality and tourism, women in business for nonprofits, and women in business for profit, uh, and women of influence. So some great, great, uh, targets, uh, for recognizing individuals in different industries and different aspects, uh, of what they do and provide to the community. The other, uh, event is more of a luncheon. It's a, it's a get-together from our understanding, and it's at the barn at Prairie Lane in Crossfield. Uh, the Community Futures, two of them have come together within Wild Rose and Center West. Uh, the luncheon will feature keynote speakers, a vendor's market, and a catered meal by Red Seal Dining. Tickets are $25 per person. Tickets must be purchased by February 28th. For more information, we, we attach a link there. These events provide an opportunity to celebrate and to support women within the communities while fostering engagement, awareness around gender equality initiatives. So, um, this, these events and the, the recognition is, it, it's one of those things that you're always proud of. Uh, and I'm very thankful to be able to present this to council for the consideration. Now, um, some, some options that we have for councils, that council can, um, accept the information as presented. Council can approve council's participation at the Women's Business Awards Luncheon in Olds to be funded through the operation budget. Uh, that council can approve council's participation at the Women's Luncheon in Crossfield to be funded also through the operation budget. So I leave that in council's, uh, place. And if there are any questions, I hope I can answer them. If not, we can, uh, provide that information, uh, to council at a later date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gannon. Um, okay, discussion, questions, comments? Direction? Go ahead, Deputy Reeve McGee.
I was one of the people who had hoped you could bring this back, and so I really appreciate the information. Um, there is an inconsistency in your information in that we know what the, who is hosting the second event, but we didn't name who's hosting the first event. Do I understand correctly from, from going on to the ticket site then, it's called Mountain View and Neighbors Women in Business? And then, who is that?
Go ahead, Mr. Gannon.
Uh, thank... Thank you through the chair. Um, from what I understand, it's an initiative, and I, I could be, stand to be corrected. It's just my understanding, and I have to bring that back. Uh, it has, uh, the chambers are involved with, with aiding in this project and those communities, uh, to bring these events together. So, um, the chambers are supporting it. I'm, I'm not quite certain if they are the, um, the initiators of it. Um, but I, what I do understand is that these individuals have come together, including the chambers, in order for this event to move forward. Um, but I could be mistaken on who the actual driver is. I do apologize, Counselor McGee.
Counselor Cunningham, I'm sure you'll be able to give us a bit more information, so please.
For sure, yeah, and I know we did have an email exchange, so I apologize if I wasn't clear in the email. Um, so this is only the second annual for the Mountain View and Neighbors event, so, um, it was an initiative brought forward by Deborah Rice Salomons. She owns the Heritage Center in Mountain View County. She's, uh, actually was originally from Torrington. Um, so this was her, uh, kind of, um, baby to begin with. So last year, there was a certain group involved. This year, it's expanded. So as we've talked at other meetings, um, I think it was, was it the last meeting? I mean, I've been appointed from Neale County. The Reeve of, uh, Mountain View County, Angela Albers, is on the committee. The mayor of, or pardon me, the Reeve of Clearwater's on it. Um, the chambers within the area are involved. So I guess, I would say, in essence, that would be the hosting committee, Deputy Reeve McGee. Um, and just with help from those neighboring municipalities and, uh, Chamber of Commerce groups.
Okay, thank you for that, that clarification. Any, uh, Counselor Christie, please.
Just to comment that Community Futures Wild Rose, um, supplied tickets for all the women on the board to go to that one. I pointed out I was raised by, with a bunch of sisters, it was, didn't feel fair.
Even though you have sisters, it didn't count.
But for sure, what, the Community Futures are the ones that are sponsoring that one, so...
Counselor Penner, please.
So I guess, um, we had a good discussion on the January 21st meeting, and I'd actually make the motion that maybe this is something we bring to the committee and our boards, this. But after, I was thinking about it afterwards, and not sure what, um, mandates somebody, a counselor, to sit on one of those boards so that their, their expenses are paid for. Like, this is something that somebody pride, I'm fully behind this, and I'm fully behind sponsoring something like this because there are other rewards for different other age groups, dynamics, whatever, which I'm fully behind. Um, but I know at that meeting, I had suggested that maybe this is something that we put on the list. And, and like I said, I put a bit of thought into it, and, and I don't, I can't stand behind that anymore, sorry, because this is something, um, that somebody has put forward. And I just don't know, um, the wording behind, you know, do you get what I'm saying? Sorry, I don't even, I don't know how to put my thoughts to my words here, but, um, but that was part of the discussion we had on January 21st. And, and I love it, the, the outstanding, um, women are being acknowledged here. And like I said, I'm fully behind sponsorship or some kind of su, financial support. But I just, I just wanted to have more discussion on the motion that I had, um, brought forward at the January 21st meeting.
Okay, just, uh, from my point of view and for clarification, the decision we made at the last meeting about allowing and appointing Counselor Cunningham to the Women in Business event at Olds was for this current calendar year. Any discussion about what we would do going forward, I would assume would happen um, at a organizational meeting, where we would determine whether that's a committee that we are going to officially recognize as council and as the county, and therefore assign someone to sit there. Um, but because of the situation that we found ourselves in this year, um, we felt it was appropriate... But because of the situation that we found ourselves in this year, we felt it was appropriate and right to allow Councilor Cunningham to be our representative there. So I think that the decision we made at the last council meeting impacts this current year. Going forward, that would be a determination of council as to further participation. The other event through Wild Rose Community Futures, of course, is officially recognized committee of Neale County, and will be ongoing. So at this point, we've recognized the value of what's happening there, and we've appointed Councilor Cunningham as our representative for the current year. I don't know if that helps or clarifies it for you, but my anticipation would be is that if we're going to go forward in the future, we'd have a bigger conversation around that, and likely add an organizational. And Mr. Hogan, I don't know if I got that nailed, or if I'm way off base, but certainly would look for clarification from your end as well.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I think you've done, I think you've done well on that explanation.
Deputy Reeve McGee.
I have a problem with us having that discussion at the organizational meeting. I think the point that I heard Councilor Penner say is that we need to have the policy in place that allows for that.
Okay.
And when it comes to this type of event, it doesn't qualify under already something that would be listed at the organizational meeting. Not saying it won't be, but we need to do a step first for it to be there.
Okay. I have no problem with that. I'm not sure this is the place and time to have that conversation.
No, I'm just saying, I don't want it at the organization.
Okay, so there's some direction for administration, I'm taking, that we want to have that conversation. Let's get past the event and celebrate the success that's there this year, and acknowledge and appreciate the work, Councilor Cunningham, that you're doing with that committee, and then have another conversation around where we might want to go in the future. Councilor Phobes, please.
Well, that all being said, I would make the motion that council accept this for information as presented, because if I choose to go, I can pay for this out of my own pocket. I don't need the county to do that for myself, so I'm okay. That's how I will support it myself personally, and because this is such a new thing being presented to just us, it's in its second year, let's see where it goes from there first, and if it is something that's going to be viable for that organization to do, and if it's going to be supported by other municipalities. But that, it's still in its infancy right now, so let's see where it goes. I'm willing to pay for my own tickets, so I would just accept this information as presented.
Go ahead, Councilor Cunningham, or Penner, sorry.
What did you call me, Whitstock or something like that? So being Councilor Christie, just a little bit furthermore, that Councilor Christie sits on the Community Futures Wild Rose, he would automatically get to go, right? We would cover his costs because he sits on that board, is that what you're thinking? Okay, thank you.
Should I say I don't feel welcome now? I said it the other night, so...
Okay, this time, Councilor Cunningham.
Thanks. So, and I know we're going to have this discussion another day, but just a little bit more clarity on it. I think I mentioned last time, I did attend last year on my own accord, and I did feel uncomfortable that Neale County didn't have a seat at the table, because we did have five amazing women within Neale County and our urban partners that were recognized. So it did feel odd to me that we weren't there. We have a fairly large economic budget, we're really trying to move forward with economic development, and I think anytime we get the ability to recognize the women that are putting themselves out there and opening businesses and trying to maintain businesses, I mean, to me, we want to recognize that, so. And we always talk about we, as the county, can't do everything. We want people to do the initiative, so I appreciate the fact that Deborah's taken the initiative to do this, because, you know, I don't think it's something that's on our docket personally right now, so. And I'm with Councilor Phobes, I actually bought my own ticket quite a long time ago, and I actually have bought one for Councilor Phobes as well, so we will be attending on our own accord. I would love to attend the other event as well, and if I choose, I will do that on my own. It's just having them back-to-back days and just schedules doesn't allow me to go, but I'm very thankful that Community Futures is doing that to recognize the women as well, so kudos to them.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Gannon, yes, please.
Thank you through the chair. Our intention is that a member from administration through our Economic Development Team will be attending the event, and will be participating in some aspect to be recognizing those that are there as well.
Okay, thank you for that. So we currently do have a motion that we accept this RFD for information as presented. Is there any further discussion, either to the motion or to the presentation? If not, I'm going to ask the question, are we ready for that? Appears we are. So the motion is that council accept the International Women's Day information as presented. All right, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Gannon. Okay, the next item on our agenda is 7.1, which would be Exploration of a Regional Fire Service Grant Support Letter. And Mr. Hogan, I see your name is on this one, so if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. The request for decision that's before council stems out of some discussions that have been taking place around exploring a regional fire service. So that exploration is exactly that, an exploration. So it's not a determined move to a regional system, it's not a, that's a decision down the road, whether you go forward. This is really about exploring what that might look like, what the resources required to do that are, what the costs and benefits of doing that are. And so all those things that would lead to the information you'd need to make a decision down the road, that's what the regional municipalities are looking at exploring at this time. So when we talked about this as municipalities, this is an item, or the explorationalist is an item, that we feel falls within the domain of the Alberta Community Partnership Grant. So that's a grant that two or more municipalities can jointly apply for to receive funding from the province to explore different ideas or different projects. There's different streams of it, but the ones that in particular, new and enhanced regional municipal services, which this would be, improved municipal capacity to respond to priorities, effective intermunicipal relations. So we feel that this meets all of those elements within that stream. If we made this application, we could apply for, as joint municipalities could apply for up to $200,000, which so in essence, we feel that the cost of this exploration could be fully covered by a grant. So it would require staff time from each of the municipalities, but again, that'd be an alternate revenue source that would supply the funding for this exploration. The Village of Acme has volunteered to take the lead on this, and so one of the things that we've been talking about administratively with the county is that we feel it's best served if some of our regional partners are the ones that are taking the lead on this. Acme has put forward their willingness to do so, but in order to apply for the grant, they do need letters of support from the other entities. So really, the letter of support boils down to the county saying, yes, we endorse this project, we think it's good, and we support Acme taking the lead on it. That's part of the application package. Applications under this grant generally are made later in the year, so this is quite an advance, this is quite an advance item that we've brought forward to, is the application wouldn't be made likely for several months yet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hogan. Is there any discussion or questions related to this item in terms of a support letter to allow exploration of a regional fire service? If there are no questions or discussion, I would be looking for direction from council as to what we would like to do. Councilor Penner, please.
To me, this is a no-brainer, and I hope for the other municipalities within our county sign too, so I'd make the motion that council opt to support the request for support.
So we have a motion, and the motion is that council support the Village of Acme's application to Alberta Community Partnership to explore regional fire services. Any further discussion to the motion to opt in? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question, all those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is council and committee reports. 9.1 would be Division 5 Report. Councilor Cunningham, please.
Okay, so I attended the Building Community Through Innovation workshop in Drumheller on January 29th, which was facilitated through Travel Drumheller and Danny Page, who's been before us at council. Very energetic folks. I walked out of there feeling very revitalized about business, so that was awesome. And again, we always say, one of the most amazing things is the networking that happens, and we did have two of our local businesses, Kirk's Alpaca Farm and Goodnight's Entertainment, were there, so it was really nice just to be able to spend some time with them, and Wendy Gerbrandt with Economic Development with Neale County was there as well, so, and of course, Deputy Reeve McGee and Councilor Whitstock. So it was just really good to be able to have conversations with everybody, so yeah, so that was really good. And then, so Mr. Gannon has done an excellent job of kind of talking about the Mountain View and Women's Awards. I do have posters, if anybody is interested. Nominations for the Women in Business Awards close on February 21st, so if anybody is interested in nominating, please hop on that soon. I know we've shared it on the Neale County page, 3000 District Chamber of Commerce, and then, of course, Mountain View and Neighbors Women in Business does have a Facebook page, so there's just a QR code that people can nominate, and also a QR code for getting tickets, so that is coming quickly. And then, I just attended virtually the RMA Spring Meeting, which was held at the Pinoka Golf Course. Just a couple of things that I found really interesting. One resolution that is coming forward is the decentralization of provincial offices to stimulate economic growth. So kind of the premise of that is they would really like to see some offices move out of Edmonton and come more to rural Alberta, which I think is an amazing idea, right? Where does a lot of the economic activity happen? So, I mean, to me, that was, like, kudos to them, County Steller, for putting that forward. And then, the other one, I know there's been a little bit of chatter about it, but Wheatland County has put forward advocacy for the exploration of an RMA, or pardon me, a Rural Canadian Municipalities Association, so maybe going a little bit away from FCM and maybe having more of a rural focus. And of course, the conversation always came up, as usual, is what is the definition of rural? So, yeah, so some really good discussions that day, and yeah, it's great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions for Councilor Cunningham? If not, then I would go to 9.2, which is the RMA Central Zone Meeting, and I'll let the rest of you weigh in on what your impressions were of that particular meeting. Any further comment or discussion related to that? I was unable to attend, so I'm glad to hear that it was productive. Okay, you've already covered my 9.3, which is the Women in Business, so thank you for that. 9.4 was Drumheller Travel, and you referred to that. Any other comment from others who attended that event? Deputy Reeve McGee.
I just want to, again, say how much I appreciated being at that event. I feel Drumheller brought in some excellent facilitators that really spoke well on the importance of economic development in tourism, and what that means. I think that's often a misunderstood item, so, and then just the enthusiasm of everyone in the room about wanting to work together as a region was really fun to be part of, and I hope that inspires us going forward.
Okay, thank you for that. There are no questions or other comment related to that? I would be on to 9.5, which is Community Futures, and that's you, Councilor Christie.
Okay, last meeting, you asked about the Regional Workforce Study, so I got you copies of the final report. Part of the outcome of that is the bridge funding that we came up with for housing is a small part of that. It indicated to me when I went back to Community Futures, the uptake at the south end of the region was, is poor. Town Atroshu has actually applied for a grant to work on labor needs, skills, that kind of stuff. I don't know when that grant will be available, and whether we should look at partnering with them or doing something with them. I don't know where they're at with that. There is recommendations for the key themes and solutions for fulfilling general labor needs, fulfilling skilled labor needs, available and affordable housing, training for small employers without HR services, stakeholder labor service engagement, and regional recruitment was the main goals of it. It's just hasn't really taken hold and off yet, so that's that one. Heart of our community, which I've talked about before, the first quarter is in working now. There was 38 businesses nominated in the south end of our region from 66 nominations. So mid-March, we need to nominate the south end of our county in March for the next quarter, and the third quarter is the north end of the county, so that was that one. The Women's Awards thing was actually just brought up at the last meeting, so that was the first I heard of it after our meeting, so that's where we're at there, so.
Okay. Are there any questions for Councilor Christie on Community Futures? Thank you for providing the information on the workforce study, and if there are no questions, I'll let you go on to 9.6, which is Brownlee Law.
Brownlee, I got, we were informed that mid-spring, our provincial government is going to not cancel, but cease FOIP. Each municipality will have one year to come up with their own program across the province. And I'll let my talk anymore on that one, because it's going to cost some time, and it doesn't make sense to me that they would get rid of a provincial program that healthcare uses, police force uses, it's not just us, it's going to change the way we do closed session stuff. Like, it just doesn't make sense, but that's what they know.
Mr. Hogan, did you want to comment?
I believe, I believe that Councilor Christie referenced me on that, so, yes.
You're welcome.
Councilor Christie is correct. That is going to place a fair amount of work on our plates. We don't know what that is yet. The regulations for those acts are still being written, so what is happening is that the FOIP Act, the Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act, is being replaced by two different acts. So there's actually two other pieces of legislation incoming to, and FOIP will be repealed. So some of those are updates to what we do with information, how we collect it, we go about that. Some of the things that we're waiting on the regulations for to see what type of workload that's going to be on, and of course, in our case, I'm talking about us, but every municipality is going to have to do this. Every university, hospital, everything. So it's not just Neale County, everybody's going to have to go through this, but in that session, they were talking about in the legislation needing to do basically a privacy audit for any time we are collecting public information. So if we're doing a project that involved collecting public information, we would have to do a privacy audit on that information, and what we're going to do, how we're going to store it, those types of things in conjunction with that program. So that adds one thing to a lot of things that we do. Again, the details of that are unknown, they're still in the regulations, which are still being written. So once that, we know it's coming, but we don't have enough information to make an actual assessment on what that's going to do in terms of how we have to change our processes or additional things we have to do. Once we see the regulations, we'll have a better idea of that.
And let's be clear, if it goes through, that means more staff, more tax dollars for this change.
Through the Reeve, we're hoping not, but I mean, ultimately, it's going to be an assessment of what needs to move around or what needs to give in order to... what needs to move around or what needs to give in order to do those. Again, we don't know the intensity that audit I was talking about is going to be yet.
So I would think that, I'll come to you in just a second. I would think that there's potential opportunity here for some cooperative effort through RMA AM to have a municipal approach to an overarching policy on FOIP action. And maybe Calgary and Edmonton and some of the big cities might choose to go their own way. But I'm sure all our small urban partners in rural Alberta would love to have some partnership in a process that would develop a policy that maybe all of us could apply. So hopefully, there's some room for cooperative action on something like this. Councillor Forbes?
Because I wasn't in attendance to this, did they explain why the province wants to do this?
Did they have to?
Less money spent.
They do, but they didn't. My concern is to get consistency right across the province for healthcare and police force and all that stuff. Because each police force is going to have to be in our municipalities, going to have to follow our rules or their rules. It's extremely vague at this point.
Well, and that's why we're waiting for regulation, right? And we could wait a long time. Mr. Hogan, you wanted to make a comment?
Through that, I think the question did come up at the session as to why the province was doing that. And the response from the legal entity putting on the session was, we don't know. We don't understand either. So there, you know, are there some updates needed because of changing technology? Probably. As we go through there, the province will have legislation that replaces the FOIP Act. So the ultimate framework in rules will be in that legislation. So we ourselves don't have to recreate a FOIP Act, right? But it's the processes that flow from those acts that we're going to have to figure out. And that's where, when we see the regulation. I mean, currently, every municipality has a records retention, you know, we have a records retention bylaw and system. We have a filing system. It's not that this stuff doesn't exist now. A lot of it does. It's a matter of figuring out when we see the regulations, what we might need to change. Right? And hopefully, that's very little, but we do know that there will be, there will be some, so.
Councillor Penner, please.
Sorry, it just tweaks my memory here about Brownlee and at our RMA Zone Meeting to do with abandoned or dissolving societies, our little rural halls and whatnot else. And there's a lot of them out there, not saying in Neale County, but in the province in general. And in down, to the end of it, yes, the province could take them back once they're dissolved correctly. And we had big discussions on how the assets are dealt with and all that kind of stuff. And then somebody says, well, the province doesn't do anything with them after a while. And they become an unsafe building, then it's back to the county to deal with them. So it was really, it was a really good presentation that Brownlee had put on up there too, to do, because it's going to happen to all of us with these little rural halls and buildings that are out there.
Okay. Thank you for that ray of sunshine.
You're welcome.
Oh, man. Go ahead councillor Penner.
This is not a report we've done, everyone's report, correct?
We have one more.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. So 9.7, if there are no further questions on Brownlee, would be the Agribusiness Panel that was attended by the Deputy Reeve on my behalf. And so go ahead, please, Deputy Reeve McGee.
So the actual name they gave the event was Alberta Economy and Future of Agriculture Discussion with the Alberta NDP. Yes. It actually was an exceptionally appreciated event on my part and on many people's parts in that it was not at all political. It was an education opportunity about what ag needs for us to move forward and be an economic force in Alberta. And so they had some great panelists who did the presenting of information. The NDP simply were the hosts and the facilitators of the conversation, but there was not a political point on it as their main purpose. Some of the key phrases that I got that I thought was really enjoyable was, it was very clear the one panel brought home, I should tell you first, the panels were economics panel, then there was an ag tech panel, then an ag or food panel. And then, of course, our, the leader, Nenji, just simply had a presentation. So I liked the one panel, made it very clear. The one guy has it coined, and I can't remember, I'm sorry, I don't have anyone's names, but I can get them for you. He said, "If you eat, you're a part of egg." And he said, "That's the conversation we may need to be having as a province. This isn't about one industry and a certain group of people way out there that we can't relate to. There isn't a soul in Alberta that isn't part of egg, and that's how we need to start talking about it." So I was really appreciative of that piece of the conversation. Part of the point of the panels were to bring awareness of what we need to bring security around our food production and food availability. And that Alberta and Canada wide is quite far behind compared to many of the European countries, Australia and a few others, at having good policy and process in place to move us forward and to be secure in the world market, as well as just for our own locals. They talked about the importance of how innovation is moving forward rapidly. What they feel is the missing piece is how is innovation going to work together and collaboratively so that we can move forward in a faster, more constructive rate? Try to eliminate the competition, but be a provincial force as opposed to independent people so that we can correct faster. And of course, there was conversation around, brought forward from the members who were in the audience about, these are all great things, but without connectivity to the producers of our ag, there's going to be, we're really going to be behind. And that was recognized as truly a really, a big lacking piece to Canada being able to be part of the market to the level they wish to have it. So I have to say, I really appreciated the excellent information. People top, top in their, in the industry were brought forward. Todd Orman from Olds College was one of the panelists on technology, for example. And I'm sorry, all the other names are forgetting me, and I left my notes at home, so I can get those for you. But I really did appreciate that the leader did say he feels that the current government has been taking our rural ag business for granted and has not put enough energy into being sure that we are going to be moving forward in the direction we need to. And so that was the political point of his message primarily, but he tried to keep politics out. He also is a strong, has a very strong understanding of the frustration ag producers and all industries would have with how our rail system works and has had some experiences with the CEO that just elevated his frustration.
Well, thank you for that. I would say it's probably fair to say that if you're dealing with railroads, they have had a fair amount of sway in our confederation from the very beginning, and they still continue to do that. The only other comment I would make is our provincial government is currently spending their energy on energy.
That was his comment, correct?
And it's a true reflection of the situation. So thank you. I appreciated you taking my place. And I very much now regret that I wasn't able to attend, so, anyway. So that brings us to the end of our council committee reports. And councillor Penner, you had a comment you wanted to make.
This isn't a report, and I'd like, if the fellow council know more details. Torrington has been nominated in the Craft Hockeyville. And I just thought we should put it out there. Can anyone elaborate a little bit more on? Because this is a county-owned facility. So if somebody could elaborate on what the rest of us as ratepayers and that can do to support the voting or however this works in this, sorry, I'm not a hockey parent still.
Go ahead councillor Forbes.
I'm not a hockey parent anymore as well, since my youngest is now old. So you can go on to the Craft website. And so every time you submit something, it is, there is a point value attached to it. So it'll be on the amount of points that are collected, I'm assuming. I don't like the word assume, but that's how it goes. But, so if you can provide a picture, there's more points. So I have a husband who used to figure skate in that building, sorry, honey. That I could probably take a picture, but he didn't just, he was a goalie in that building. We've curled in that, my children were raised in that building, true story, they're all curling little people, so. It's based on points. Depending on if you go on to the website, it tells you where you rate and how much it rates. If you put the picture in the little story, you get more points.
And the deadline, sorry for that?
March 2nd.
March 2nd, okay. Yeah, thank you for that. And the other, sorry, go ahead.
No, finish, let councillor Penner finish. Okay, you're done with that?
I was just going to say with Craft Hockeyville, I had asked Mr. Hogan if we could put it on the Facebook page. So I think it was last week sometimes, so people would be able to find it on the Neale County Facebook page as well. The link to the Craft Hockeyville.
No, I just wanted to bring it up. The more people that do it, the better, and it does help us locally here. And the other one too is to do with the brood, the business retention expansion and workforce development. This is so important for everybody in the county to do this. We all are part of a business. So please, as a county, we need you to do it. We need the numbers in order to go forward here with funding and just direction. They want our direction, which direction they should really go. So please, it's been in the newspapers, it's on the county website, it's everywhere. If you need further information, please talk to one of us councillors, and we will point you in the right direction.
Okay, thank you for that. It's a good reminder. And as we discussed earlier today, we, as councillors and organization, we need to be promoting this. The value comes to us in terms of if we get the responses, so we need those. Okay, if there's nothing else on council and committee stuff, I would entertain a motion to accept council committee reports as presented. Councillor Cunningham?
I'll make the motion that council accepts for information, the council and committee report as presented.
Okay, thank you very much. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. All right, the next item on our agenda is 10, which is council follow-up action list. And are there any questions related to the council follow-up action list? Councillor, Deputy Reeve McGee?
So I just wanted to, just to repeat actually what councillor Penner brought up, is the brood part. I would like to have an update, if there is, about how much participation we have and is there any measures you can see that we could do to make this even more successful?
Mr. Hogan, please.
Dear Mr. Chair, at this point in time, I'm really getting the message out there around how important it is contacting individuals that you may know that should be participating in that. I will say, response at this point in time has been very low. So obviously, we're not going to get a lot of good data if we have, that we need if we have, if we have a low response rate. Behind the scenes, there is some work that our active staff are doing with the, with the project managers or leaders to try and make the survey more enticing or less of a burden. So we are trying to take some of those actions administratively to put out there as well. You know, one of the examples that I think is a specific one, if you go to the website, I have, no, admittedly, I haven't checked it in a couple of days. But if you go to the website, I think it indicates the survey takes 40, 45 minutes to do. My understanding is it's actually quite a bit less than that. And so that is an example, something that our, our staff are trying to change, is, you know, ask somebody to do a 15-minute survey or a 20-minute survey versus a 45 one is a big difference. And so that is something that administratively we're working on, trying to get a different message out.
Okay, thank you for that, Deputy Reeve McGee.
I have a lot of passion for it, so I just need to get on my soapbox for a minute. The council will indulge me.
Well, I thought maybe you were going to get in your little car and drive around. So go ahead, soapbox away.
I just, I just really want to reiterate that we often are asked, what has come of this, what has come of that? And those are really fair and valid questions. And we really want to make this project have those answers for you. They'll be long coming, because it's a quite extensive project. And so, however, we can't do anything without data to back us up. That's one of the challenges of our roles here at council. We need to have information that justifies decisions we make. And this data is going to help with that. It's also going to help with our regional groups that do other things as well around that that support us. And the truth is, I really would like to see the needs of our unique residents be clear in this data so that when regional decisions are being made, you're not left out. For me, that's the biggest reason. There will be regional decisions made, and if your opinion isn't there, we will have less impact to our county than if we were there. So it truly is worth your time. I know it sounds so airy in the sky of minimizing it, but it really isn't. It will impact even advocacy to the provincial and federal level. So please, please, let us hear what you need that makes us unique and special for you.
Okay, thank you for that. Used to be apple crates or soapboxes, so both of those are acceptable.
Carry mine with me.
So are there any other comments? Councillor Cunningham, please.
So just wondering if we could get an update. September 10th, 24, council directed administration to send a response letter to Minister Newdorff and Premier Smith regarding concerns on renewable energy. And I just noticed this is a draft letter, is under review, so just wondering if we could get an update on that. And then November 12th, 24, council directed a letter be sent to Minister Newdorff regarding concerns about private business interests attempting to change or alter the land suitability. Just wondering if we could get an update on where those two are at.
Mr. Hogan?
Dear Mr. Reeve, they are in draft right now, so I'm hoping to, actually, I'm hoping to close those out this week. I'm going to be updating that with some of the information that's come out. Maybe not directly to that, but can be related and tied in. So as an example, there was a decision up in Westlock County that came out. We'll be tying some, I hope to tie some information into, into that. And some of the things that I've seen in that decision that will, I think, aid our points. The other component is we have the letter regarding the change in that. We actually, I'll be updating, I do have a draft of that that's nearing completion. We'll be updating that, actually, based on some of the conversation we had with legal counsel yesterday. And some of which we'll touch on in closed session here as well. But our intent is within the next week or two that those letters will be done.
Okay, thank you for that update. Are there any other questions related to the council follow-up action list? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I would entertain a motion to receive the council follow-up action list for information. Councillor Christie?
So moved.
Okay, so I have a motion to receive for information, the council follow-up action list is presented, which of course means we're giving Mr. Zier a clean pass on this one, which he totally appreciates. All right, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. And the next item on our agenda is closed session, but we're going to take a recess. Before we do that, we're in recess till 10:45. So we have a number of things to do in closed session, so please return promptly, 10:45.
Okay, it's ten forty five and I'm going to call our meeting back to order. The next items on our agenda are closed session items. However, before we go there, I neglected at the beginning of our meeting to mention that I had a second and totally had a mind blank intergovernmental relations item to add to our closed session. So I guess I'm asking for council's permission and indulgence to add another item on the der for section twenty one intergovernmental relations. So I have your indulgence. So we're closed session for intergovernmental relations twice, two things, section twenty one and one third party business section sixteen. At this point, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session. Counselor Phobes, please.
So moved.
So we have a motion to go into closed session at ten forty six. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you.
So we had a motion to return to open session at 12:59. We recessed to allow the return of the gallery. It is now 1:01 and I'm going to call our meeting back to order. We have a motion coming out of closed session that we need to make to give direction to administration. So I'm looking for someone to make that motion.
I'll do it.
Councilfoobs.
As long as I can read it. The council direct administration to bring to a future council meeting an amending bylaw to revise the bylaw 1898, that being a bylaw to authorize the guarantee of a loan by the town of Troschu to set the maximum allowable interest rate at 6%.
Okay, thank you for that. Any discussion to that motion? Are we prepared for the question? All those in favor? And that's also carried unanimously. And at this point, that's the end of our agenda. And it is now 1:02 and I adjourn the meeting at 1:02 PM. Thank you for your time, attention, and patience.